Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, no.
I know. That I have my own.
Yeah. There will be questions.
Good afternoon. Board members, staff, visitors. The time is six oh one on this twenty ninth date of September twenty twenty two, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board to receive order. If I can have Mr. Villaldo say the prayer, then Mr. Martinez, if I can. Can everybody please stand?
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events and for all of our faculty, our staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and that we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and, most importantly, their confidence in our leadership. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness, and help us to make the decisions that are for good, for the good of all those, and guard us from blind self-interest. Your Lord, grant us, seeking to teach all we seek your will in all that we do and in all that we say. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Ramos, could you please have a poll roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Sepeda?
Present.
Jorge J. Legado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez?
Absent.
Mercury Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Escarranza? Esteban Rangel? Absent. Karina Lisondo? Absent. Tita Cantubella?
Here.
You have a question. Thank you. And Ms. Mahrez requested to be excused today. She had a power commitment that she was not able to come today.
Please.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Beard? To excuse her?
So if, if the board is going to formally excuse the absence so that it does not count as an absence, then the motion would be required, and you could do it during roll call. If you're simply acknowledging that she's not here today and not desiring to, to formally excuse the absence, then you would not need a motion.
Okay. Thank you. The next item I have is the approval of the minutes of the board retreat of August twentieth, twenty twenty two, and the regular board meeting of August twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Mr. Martinez. I have a second by Mr. Villaldo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four, I have public testimony. Do we have any? No public testimony. Thank you. Number five is recognitions, communications, introduction of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. The first item is five A, presentation of appreciation plaque by literacy volunteers of Laredo, and it's the literacy volunteers of Laredo Board of Directors. Somebody familiar, Miss Me? College Board of Trustees, Dr. Minutary, Administration, and Staff. John F. Kennedy, my name is Karen Schnees from Literacy Volunteers for the record, retired from Laredo College. John F. Kennedy once said, "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget, the highest appreciation is not to other words, but to live by them." Laredo College has exhibited this through their actions of supporting by hosting literacy volunteers since nineteen eighty six at the Fort Macintosh campus, that we are living, and so that should we are living, you are living by this rule. We will always be grateful. In this amount of time, literacy volunteers of Laredo has served thousands of Laredonians' efforts to learn and read and write the English language as a second language, to prepare for citizenships, financial, and computer literacy, to name a few. Oftentimes, we teamed up with Sandra Cortez and her department's and got added results. Our being at the college allowed for many fabulous events, such as graduations, Christmas parties, and United Way kickoffs. We even had an event highlighting one of the CSI writers from Los Angeles. It was open to the public and subsidized by the college. It was first-class, and it was held at the Kason Center. The community was in awe. Finally, thank you for the many board members who are dedicated to the mission. They are hard-working volunteers, and I would like to take a minute and ask many of the inter here today, if you could just stand, please, for the rest of the presentation, literacy volunteer board members, hopefully, within the meeting. Many of them have served as officers down through the years. As I close, please remember, as an unknown person said, "It is not happy people who are thankful. It is thankful people who are happy." We are happy. On behalf of literacy volunteers of Laredo, we present to you the Board of Trustees, Dr. Minutary, Minutary, and your administration and staff, this plaque with our gratitude, and it reads, "With never-ending appreciation and gratitude, literacy volunteers of Laredo extends a heartfelt thank you for hosting our organization since its inception nineteen eighty six. We also thank Laredo College for its continued support to our mission of adult literacy for our beloved community, presented to Laredo College on this twenty ninth date of September two thousand twenty-two, nineteen eighty-six to twenty twenty-two, Board of Directors. This is not the end of our relationship."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the Board of Directors, thank you to literacy volunteers, literacy of Laredo, for all that you do for our community. Thank you. Next item I have is five B, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, Texas Transfer Advisory Committee on the Discipline of Biology appointee, Ms. Rosana Vargas.
Maricela Rodriguez, the Hiderna Provo's Vice President of Academic Affairs. Good evening, board members, Dr. Ramirez, guests. It is my honor to introduce to you, definitely not a stranger, but I'm very proud of Ms. Roxanne Vargas, who was recently approved by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to serve on the transfer committee, particularly for biology. This is something that she applied for. We send the recommendations. THCC then selects a few members from colleges and universities, so she was appointed in the state committee, so we're very proud of her. She's been with us since twenty eleven as an adjunct instructor, and in twenty twelve, she became a full-time instructor, and I was part of the hiring committee. And very proud, her expertise in microbiology and, of course, biology, so we're very proud of her and wanted to introduce and congratulate her on the point.
Yes.
Good job, Roxanne. We know you're gonna do great things for us on the coordinating board.
The, the next item I have is five C, Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, Haku, leaders and residents, Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, esteemed board members. Madam President, Sepeda, Madam President, Ramirez. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Succession Enrollment, for the record. Tonight, it gives me a great pleasure to present an award that's been, or a recognition that's been given to two of our best students that we have on inherent campus. The Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, otherwise known as Haku, has recognized two of our students as leaders and residents. This designation entitles our students to be part of the Haku Annual Conference, and where they'll be receiving leadership and career development training. Their sponsor is, is Rosemary Agüero, and this evening, I'd like to present, beginning with Ms. Julie Martinez, if she can come to the front. Ms. Julie is majoring in biology and plans to join the military. Julie enjoys learning and expanding her knowledge through being able to learn about different topics, such as hypertension, sleep deprivation, and mental health. Her faculty advisor is Dr. Laura Lopez. Next, I'd like to call on Mr. Jorge Gonzalez. Mr. Gonzalez is majoring in nursing. He is currently enrolling classes at both Laredo College and Tanyu. He is taking pre-nursing classes, so he can start his DSM program this spring semester. His faculty advisor is Dr. Antonio Pataza. Ladies and gentlemen, Julie Martinez and Jorge Gonzalez.
Ms. Sepeda, and Board of Trustees, and my public aide. This, this program that Haku does is very, very sought after, and hundreds of students from across the country apply to be selected as, for this fellowship that they get, that they've received. Haku is paying for their trip, and so ideally, this year, we're, we're taking just the two of them, but next year, we're hoping to take a group of at least ten or twelve students to the, to this conference. It is very, very, very good for our students to participate. This is where they get exposed to the opportunities that exist with corporate America in, in different fields of work, and they get exposed to, to leadership skills and development as well, and they get partnered with folks out of the Haku program in DC for internships with governmental agencies as well, and so we're very, I'm very excited. I'm, I'm going as well to the meeting, and so we're gonna meet up in, in San Diego, California, and, and I'll make sure that they, they get around, so. But I'm very excited for both of them, so congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I don't know if you all are aware, but Laredo College was a founding member of Haku. There were thirteen institutions that originally started Haku, and Laredo College was one of them back in the, back in the sixties, I think it was, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Congratulations, and enjoy your trip. Thank you. The next item is five D, Molina Foundation Book Buddies Grant, the Cynthia Rodriguez.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President, Sepeda, Madam President, Ramirez. Today, tonight, early August, with the support of Christina Ramos and Dr. Ramirez, we applied to a grant, the Molina Foundation Book Buddies Grant, and late on in that month, we were notified that we were awarded the grant. So the grant consisted of thirty thousand books. For, it was, it was geared for our students, so there were YA, young adult readers, to the adult readers, and a little bit of children's books in there. So we were excited for the opportunity. The books came in. We were trying to find a location around campus so we can distribute the valid events that we have near on campus. The books arrived this past Tuesday, and I put a little picture because physical fact was exceptional. They, you know, they were here at the time of the trucking. It was a whole, it was a truckload, a whole freighter. There were twenty-one pallets, and we found a very nice location for them at the Urban Garcia Old Nursery Building. We found a nice little location for them. We're working to have them stored, but also with the intent that we're gonna move them out to events. We have all these ideas that we have for events, like the Fall Fest, or when the recruiters go out and show the community, and have them all over campus, have all, all over campus, so that we can promote the, the foundation of reading, the, the literacy volunteers were here a minute ago. So we have to go back and show the community the importance of reading and how that leads to knowledge and, and the foundation for everything to light. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
The books are going to, the books are gonna be distributed at different events that we have coming up, both on the South Campus and on the Macintosh Campus.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next item is five E, Laredo College Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Celebration and Gala, Dr. Minnie Carramides.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you all know, yesterday, we had a very nice event. Thank you all, those of you that were able to join us. We did celebrate our actual birthday, or yesterday's the twenty-eighth of September, and so we had cupcakes and cookies for all of the students and employees that were able to join us yesterday morning, and it was, it turned out to be very nice. We got very nice coverage from the media for it, and, and to let you all know that the official date for our seventy-fifth anniversary gala is March twenty-fourth, a Friday. Denim, Diamonds and Denim will be our theme, and so we hope that all of you will mark your calendars for March twenty-fourth. Thank you.
And that's gonna be?
It's gonna be here in the Kason Center. It will be on our campus. And we'll, more to come, more information to come as, as the committee starts to develop the idea of. And the take is called.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. The next item is five F, introduction of personnel, personnel actions, Dr. Minnie Carramides.
Thank you, Ms. Sepeda. Yes, it gives me great pleasure to introduce some of our new staff. We have had some folks retire and others leave to move on to, to other opportunities, and so we've been building positions as, as they come up. We have one promotion, our new Director of Admissions, who began this, this month, Mr. Jorge Lima. He's no stranger to, to many of you, and so he's our new admissions director. We have a new payroll accountant, Ms. Diana Mata. We have a Writing Center Director, Maria Partida. Is she here? Okay. The Administrative Assistant for Information Technology, Jessica Lopez. Our new Director of Recruitment, Mr. Julio Reyes. Teaching Assistant in the, at the South Campus, Lisa Avila. Faculty Secretary Industrial and Electronic, Electronic Technologies, Joyce Salinas. Administrative Assistant in the Office of the President, Minasol Talares. Laboratory Technician, Alexis Flores. There you go. Faculty Secretary Visual and Performing Arts, Oscar Castillo. And that, that's all the, all those are all the new employees. I don't know if you wanna take a picture with the new employees.
Sure. Congratulations and welcome to Laredo College.
Very excited. I think all of them are gonna make a huge difference for us.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
The next item I have is the Faculty Senate Report, Cash Masahani.
Good evening. For the record, for Cash Masahani, Faculty Senate President and Professor of Government. I just have a few comments here. First of all, I wanted to, since I didn't get a chance after the fact to express mine, and on behalf of the faculty, appreciation for the salary increase that the Board of Trustees just recently voted to approve. We've already gotten into that paycheck and are very happy to see those, and I know it's tough to prove that with the current times, so thank you for that, to the board, for voting in favor of that measure, the administration for putting that together over the last couple of months and so forth, and of course, I would be remiss if I didn't thank both the payroll and human resources staff as well, who works together to make sure that that gets into our paychecks and that the right numbers get calculated, that it's just, that's difficult to work. On a side note, I also wanted to thank Dr. Ramirez, President Ramirez, who recently hosted a dinner with the Faculty Senate, with the Faculty Senate, and along with some of the leadership team of the college and the board, and it was a wonderful opportunity to get together with them as the faculty leaders and create a rapport amongst each other, so that we can turn the page into the new century that we are coming into at Laredo College and our next leg journey, the, the next twenty-five years, as it were. And so, thank you, Dr. Ramirez, and also, Dr. Rodriguez, speaking as well, for helping us put that together. I do have one announcement today. As you all know, for several years, we've worked on the Board of Trustees' forums for the candidates that are running for office. We are currently working on those forums for the nine candidates that are running for office. During the pandemic, we had put those forums together, if you recall, with the students and the faculty ones put together, just because it was kind of tough, and so we were again separating those as well, so there'll be two different forums, one led by the students, led with questions that students are interested in, and we're hoping tentatively to, to have that on October twenty-seven, and the Faculty Senate-led forum, hopefully, November second. So I'll come to the board, or go work through the administration to make sure that those dates are, are shared with the boards, so that you all are formally invited as well to participate, not participate, but to watch them. So those are the forums that are coming towards the end of October and early November, so those should be happening. We'll get concrete dates to you all as well as they come. Just to note that the Student Health Forum is being worked in conjunction with the Laredo College Honors Program and the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. Those are the students who will hold that forum, and it's really cool because they're government students who get to learn about how government works, with actually interacting with candidates for office and asking questions, so it puts them into the situation that usually they may not be comfortable with, but they learn a whole lot from. So we're excited about that, and I know everyone here has participated in those reports, you know, that's like. And lastly, I just wanted to ironically congratulate the college for achieving its seventy-five, seventy-fifth anniversary. We are, we've had our doors open for so many years, since I was a little kid, all of us were kids, and we'll continue to serve that mission, and so, sort of speaking to the college directly, congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Masahani. Thank you for the report. I'd like to recognize Esteban Rangel.
Thank you.
Present. Any questions? The next item is Associated Student Organization Report. Do we have somebody?
Madam President, Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Succession Enrollment. The President will not be making a report this time around, but she will join the board at the October meeting.
Okay. Thank you. The next we have the Consent Agenda. And we have Item eight-eight, August twenty twenty-two, Preliminary Financial Report. A B, Approval of a Five-Year Agreement with Avaya for Cloud Office Phone Systems. A B, Approval of a Five-Year Agreement with Avaya for Cloud Office Phone System Migration. A C, Approval to Use the Student Activities Fund Balance for the Purchase of Computer Equipment and Student ID System. A D, Approval of Acquisition of Serials and Periodicals, Services from E D S C O Information Services. A E, Ratification of Contract with E D U, sorry, E D To Go. Send Gate for the Purchase of Online Classes. A F, Approval of Funding Repairs at the M A W G M. A G is Approval to Increase the Work Study Hour Rate. A H is Approval to Extend Temporary Staffing Contract.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghe.
Yes, ma'am, this is discussing the Finance Committee meeting and also in the Building Committee, so I'm motion to approve Item A, 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 B, C, D, E, F, G, H.
So I have a motion by Mr. Ranghe, I have a second by Ms. uh Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I'd like to recognize Ms. Elizondo in attendance, welcome, thank you. Next item I have is number nine, Discussion of Possible Action. Nine A, Approval of Change Order for the P-14 Building Project, Mr. Cesar Vela, Mr. Ramon Zepeda, and Mr. Romero Vice.
Good evening, Madam President, uh, Dr. Carmenes, for the record, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration, uh, this item, we are requesting approval from the board uh for a change order for the P-14 Building Project. Uh, the total amount of being requested is forty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Um, the funding for the request is coming out of the savings uh for the facility's master plan phase two. We currently have one hundred nine thousand, ninety dollars uh available of the savings. Uh, and the change order is due to uh some changes that are being done to the uh flooring of the second floor of the building and a section of the first floor. Uh, during the process of refinishing, part of the wood floor was determined that the uh sections of that floor were uh not able to be uh uh redone because they were too thin and old. Uh, on the second floor, uh, the work called for VCT tile to be placed, however, because the floors are uneven, the recommendation in the long run is to have the pre-engineer wood floors in those in that section because the VCT floor with time will will tend to crack and make it more of a maintenance issue in the long run. So, uh, again, this call for making that change to replace the VCT floor that was originally on the scope all of the second floor, which includes offices, hallways. Uh, and then there is a section on the first floor of the wood floor that we cannot refinish, so that recommendation is to also do it with the pre-engineer uh wood flooring for that section. So, the contractor has given us some credits for the work that had originally been scoped. Uh, and uh, those credits have been taken into account, uh, and again, materials and labor uh were told forty-two thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghe.
Madam Chair, this is also discussed in the Building Committee meeting, so I'm motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Mr. Ranghe, I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, you wanna discuss something? Okay. Chair recognizes Mr. Dr. Hanson.
As far as. Uh, we're not making any changes to the exterior of the building, and as far as the floor plan of the building, no changes, it's just the flooring. Uh, again, because uh, we we're not able to refinish some of the existing wood floor. The recommendation is to replace it with this uh, with this uh pre-engineer wood flooring. But as far as the 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 buildings, uh, the layout of the building is not being changed. Yes, it's it's a pre-engineer wood flooring. It's uh, it's a wood floor, it's not the origi- the original type of the wood floor that we have there on the, but it is a wood floor. Yeah, and again, the we, the the recommendation because of the VCT floor, either the floors, floors are uneven or there's shipment, those tend to crack with with uh with time and make it a little bit harder for the maintenance.
Right.
No, no, it's not gonna impact the structural uh.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela.
Uh, with the wooden floor, I know everything, anything and everything can affect it. You know, humanity, I mean, it's, it, that happens, yes, so, but it's nice that they're replacing it with a wooden floor.
And we're gonna, if my main, Madam Chair recognizes Dr. Carmenes. We're gonna standardize this for all of the um older buildings, so the flooring that we selected to go into um this facility is what we're gonna use to standardize in all of them.
Good.
Uh, the decorative tile that we're putting in the bathroom is is a more antique looking one that sort of matches the time period uh that we selected for that, and then in the areas where we cannot refinish the floor, we're going to add um this prefabricated wood floor. Uh, so that it's one, easier to maintain, two, has longer durability, uh, and it'll, it's gonna look, it looks like a wood floor. Yeah, no, it's, we're not gonna, that's correct. Right, it's gonna look like. Yes. And we're standardizing the paint too, and so all of the paint will be the one that the Historical Society told us we needed to be using, and the colors and the whole thing, we're not. They're not gray or black.
Okay.
We're adding subways, uh, uh plywood, we're adding plywood subways and a moisture barrier, so the floor will be protected.
Go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vela. Next item is nine B, Adopted Resolution Supporting Unit Trade Brokers, L C. Application to Become a Usage-Driven Foreign Trade Zone, number 94, Designation, Located at 101 North American Industrial Park, Laredo, Texas, 78045, Dr. Carmenes.
Um, this recommendation. Um, so this resolution was brought to us, um, it is similar to the one that you all have already approved for other uh vendors. Um, we did discuss it in committee, and so I don't know, uh, if you all have any questions, uh, we're the the photographs that we got, it is difficult for us to actually identify an exact spot or space, but um thi- this is what we got, so, I I, I mean, I I hate, I don't have any, I don't have much more information other than what you see on the photographs and the resolution that you have in your packet. Uh, and so, uh, ideally, uh, I know that the discussion has been that we didn't wanna approve any of these. Uh, the truth is that uh due to NAFTA laws, we um, they they have a right to request it and uh technically uh us to approve it.
Chair recognizes Mr. Carmenes.
Do you really recommend that as a benefit for Laredo College?
Well, I I think that we've, we have approved others before, Miss Carmenes, and uh, and it's only a small percentage of the warehouse, it's not the entire warehouse.
Yes.
Uh, and so, and it's only for certain goods, so it's not everything that's coming through, and so uh, the impact to us is not um in the millions, uh, is there an impact? Yes, but we have approved others before already, and I think a precedence has already been set, so my recommendation was.
Second.
So I have a motion to approve by Mr. Ramos, and I have a second by uh Mr. Ranghe, any discussion, any further questions?
No, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, motion passes, great. Nine C is Approved Modification to Laredo College Board Policy, C D D A Local Payroll Procedures, Salary Reductions, Dr. Minnie Carmenes.
Yes, ma'am, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, so if if you look at your um, your attachments in your uh board packet, uh, we are only asking to add one line into the C D D A Local uh on number five, where it says charitable organization as approved by the board. If the board participates in the S E T T program, an employee may choose not to participate in the program and may authorize and may authorize, and it should be to choose and to authorize a deduction for the College District's Annual Employee Giving Campaign and/or other charitable organizations approved by the board. So right now, uh, we don't have a mechanism in place for our employees to do a contribution to the college scholarship fund or endowment fund of any kind and do it through payroll deduction. So all we're asking the board is to approve the opportunity.
Motion to approve.
So I have a motion by Mr. Ranghe, I have a second by Professor DeGatto, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
On on item, uh, in reference to the trade zone, I would like to uh uh actually abstain as my, uh, as I have a record in my case.
Okay.
Rather than more of no or or yes. That I'm saying.
So I have one, two, three, four, five. So we have one abstaining, we have one, oh, whatever, all the rest were yes, okay, thank you, Mr. Carmenes.
Thank you very much.
So, nine C passes, I I had all yeses, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Number 10 is Information Items, first item is Student Activities and Future Programs. Ten A, One, College of Health Sciences, Open House Scheduled on October 10th, 2022 at 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Dr. Diana Miller.
My name is Salado Leagio, speaking in our Provo's Vice President of Academic Affairs. Unfortunately, Dr. Diana Miller could not be here today, but certainly wanted to invite uh board members and the public on October 10th. We will be having an open house for the Health Sciences um from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. We definitely want to invite everybody from the public, parents, future students, current students. Um, we'll be having a lot of tours so that um guests can be introduced to all the health science programs. Faculty and students, our own students will be demonstrating the different mannequins and skills, virtual simulations, show, guide, practice, X-ray exams, U D models, student posters, presentations, screening, and assessments, and much more. Uh, Financial Aid Office, Admissions, Continuing Education, the LEAP's Program, Foundation Sisters, Mercy Clinic, organ donors, um, we'll have a truck to, for anybody that wants to donate um any blood, I believe, to uh um or register um, but they need their license and picture ID, and there'll be plenty of health sciences advi- advisors. So one of the things we're trying to promote in the Academic Affairs Division is to promote more of these open houses so that uh we can help with the awareness, enrollment, resourtion into our specific programs.
Good job, Doc.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. The next item is ten A two, Cyber Security Month, Mr. Eddie Raffo, Madam.
Hello, uh, records, uh, it's 20, but it's uh Assistant Director of uh Setup Security Institute. Uh, so I'm just gonna notice, obviously, it's not here right now, but we asked you to go ahead and go up and introduce about this. So, uh, hello, team members of the board, Madam President, uh, Spella, uh, President, uh, Dr. Carmenes. Um, so, uh, October National Cyber Security Awareness Month, so uh we decided to have some events here at the college, we're gonna have three events during the, during the month. Uh, every Monday of October, we're gonna have uh an event here at Kason for the students, uh, we're gonna be having some computer programming, we're gonna have some drones as well as some lockpicking, now I know bringing that up, most people raise their eyebrows about it, but uh, this is security is a big part of cybersecurity, right? Most people will buy a lot and hope that it protects things, but they don't realize how actually insecure they are. So that's kind of what we're showing, that they're very insecure, very easy to pick, right? So maybe people start questioning how how important it is to have those, uh, and then we're gonna culminate the month with a cyber fest, it's gonna be held at the Falcon Executive Conference Center. Um, that it's gonna be from 9:00 to 4:00 PM. Uh, the morning half is going to have uh high school students showing up, and we're gonna have uh eight activities there for them, we're gonna have uh encryption, uh, some encryption puzzles, uh, some soldering for circuits, we're gonna have, again, some lockpicking, uh, we're gonna have drones, virtual reality from the uh Laredo Public Library, they're gonna be coming to host some events as well, uh, computer technology will also be having some activities for them as well, and then we're gonna have some student-run activities uh from some student organizations there. Um, and as well as we're, we're partnering with uh several vendors, Cisco and Dell have already signed on for it, and we're already uh also recruiting other sponsors from other organizations, and so you all are welcome to show up, right? You know, uh, we'll have a glass and hopefully they all. Thank you.
The next item is ten A three, Protective Services Center Open House on September 27th, 2022.
For the record, um, so to elaborate on the open houses, the protective services, uh, Donald Hill and the faculty had one two days ago, is today, yes, right, on the same, uh, from 1:00 to 2:30, it was a good turnout, and thank you, Ms. Vela, I know you were there as well. And uh, again, the whole purpose is to bring awareness on each of our programs, and as we know with criminal justice, there's the workforce and the transfer programs, so again, just welcoming parents, current and future students to come to our open houses to learn more about our program. So it was a good success, and I want to thank Donald Hill and his team.
Thank you, very good, it was very informative, and they they had a good turnout there, and they were very informative as far as all the information, so thank you. The next item is ten A four, oh, any questions? Ten A four is Fall Fest on October 22nd, 2022, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and it's Priscilla Medina.
You have copies on your uh place settings of the event, the scheduled events and the flyer.
Good evening, board member for the Richard, my name is Priscilla Medina, I'm the Dean of the South Campus. And I am very excited, we're gonna be having our Fall Fest, October the 22nd, um, that's three Saturdays from now, we're inviting the whole community. Uh, our Fall Fest is, uh, we have the Fall Fest different from Fun Fest where the Fall Fest is only for our institution. So only our departments and our programs will be showcasing their respective areas and they'll be providing information. We do have 30 booths already taken from by the instructional departments and programs, enrollment services will be out there providing information. Uh, on our agenda, we do have um Lucha Maniacs, which is very popular at the South and it uh very well-known, uh, they're uh very well-known lucha wrestlers, and so they'll be coming out and they're gonna provide a two-hour exhibit. So we will be having uh the Lucha Maniacs come out and perform between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. Uh, the event does start at 4:00 PM, we're gonna have, uh, start off with uh Hot One Six and uh DJ Cino, so they will be providing some information, we will have at 5:00 o'clock, have a Halloween costume contest for the children and the adults, whoever wants to participate, we do have three age groups that we do have for uh anybody who wants to come out and participate in in the Halloween costume contest. And then from there, we'll have the Lucha Maniacs, and then at the end, we will uh float out with a live band, which will be Caio Ocho. So we will be inviting all of the community, we do have several radio spots, TV announcements, commercials, and so we will be having this well-publicized so that uh we uh, so that all the community can be informed, and we invite everyone to come out and participate.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any question?
Uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Ramos.
Uh, Mrs. Medina, if we could count on us on the Lawnet Association to also have a book there. Especially now that we got the books, we can probably be able to have some sort of game or something.
Yes, ma'am, of course, I will go ahead with you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other question? Thank you so much.
I I just had a question, maybe I shouldn't ask, but since it's uh election year, right before, will they be able to go in with their shirts?
Which we will not have any. Which, we will not have any solicitation. We do have signs already posted around, we will not have any type of solicitation on our ground.
So they can be there without their shirt?
Yes.
Okay.
But not if you know any information or hard reply or something.
Okay, just, just have to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Medina. Ten B is review board self-evaluation instrument as per Laredo College Board Policy. B C G local, board internal organization board evaluation. Dr. Miniteramides.
Yes ma'am, um, I, I just, we just wanted to add the item. We did include, uh, in your agenda, a copy of the Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation. Uh, as part of our Saks presentation, um, we ha- we have to do a board self-assessment annually. And so, uh, you, you all need to determine if this is, if we're gonna continue to use the same instrument. We don't need to vote on this, or you don't need to vote on this, but, uh, we do need to know if you're gonna continue to use the same instrument you used last year. And if so, then so that we can have it back in our offices at least by the end of November so that we can forward it to, uh, to, I mean, sort of Dr. Veronica Martinez so that she can include it in our, um, documentation per se.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos. Um, I would like to see that the, uh, self-evaluation be completed before reelection so that our trustees that are available now can be able to fill it out and participate.
That's fine.
I, I recommend that it be, uh, moved up to maybe the.
November third meeting? That, that'll be fine, the next board meeting is number.
November third.
Number three.
That's, uh.
Or prior to that, I don't think we have to wait until November.
No, if you get it done before and you wanna submit it, please do so. Um, you can scan it and send it to us or, um.
Did everybody see it?
Yeah.
But we did fill it out.
You can fill it out and, and, and please if you'll submit it to, um, Mrs. Volcanegra and that way she can compile them and then send them to Dr. Martinez.
We can, we can. Next board. Chair recognizes, huh? I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah. Yes, it is. Nope, it's in that.
It's in the, it's in that. Oh, you didn't get it.
No, I don't get it.
Oh, I get it. Chair recognizes. Miss Wanghead, here it is.
I don't get it.
Oh, electronic.
I was just, uh, did we get it mailed or emailed?
It's in the. You didn't get it back to me.
Yeah, I know.
It will be emailed.
Yeah, just email it so we can get a separate email so that we will know and then hopefully with the, with the time of when it's, when it's expected to have been.
Yes, yes. It'll, it'll be done.
It'll be done.
Thank you.
Any other, any other concerns? Oh, yes, sir. That's it folks. The next item is executive session. It's eleven A, consultation with Laredo College Attorney to discuss Laredo College employees' equal employment opportunity commission, E E O C complaint and dismissal notice pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one. Eleven B is co-session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four with Laredo College Attorney concerning updates on pending litigation filed against Laredo College.
Want you to take the.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Wanghead and I have a second by Mrs. Ramos to go into executive session. The time is six forty-nine. And the board will adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four with the next government code to discuss agenda items eleven A and eleven B. Thank you, everybody.
We reconvene from closed session. The time is now seven thirty-five and the board took no action. In executive session, we'll take appropriate action on items if necessary as discussed in closed session. First item is twelve A, Laredo College employers equal unemployment opportunity commission E O C complaint and dismissed on notice. No action will be taken on twelve A. Do we need to vote, Mr. Chair?
No, there's no action necessary.
On twelve B, pending litigations filed against Laredo College, no action was taken as well. Next item is number thirteen, presidential report. Thirteen A is campus police personnel and travel reports. Dr. Ramírez.
Yes ma'am, just to let you all know, there are a couple of on-campus police. Things have been going really well. I think we're make, we've been able to, thanks to your all's help. We're securing some of the purchase items that you all voted upon. And so they're excited about getting those in and moving forward. So campus police, from that perspective, is going well. Travel reports, we do have several teams of people going to different training sessions and different programs. You saw who is coming up. We also have a TAC quarterly meeting, October eighteenth and nineteenth. And I will be attending on October the eighteenth. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board is hosting a commission meeting on the new financing structure for all community colleges in Texas. And so they're having a hearing and I'll be in attendance at the coordinating board on the eighteenth and the nineteenth in the morning. We'll have a meeting at TAC. And then the Texas Pathway Institute will be in Dallas. Pardon me, I'm sorry. That's also November. That will be November fourteenth through the sixteenth. That is coming up. We also have the ACCT conference that Ms. Ramos and I will be attending. And so we have faculty and staff that are moving along as well to different programming and different training sessions. So that's moving along nicely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramírez. Any questions?
No ma'am.
Next item is thirteen B, Association of Community College Trustees Complimentary Board Services. Dr. Ramírez.
Yes ma'am, and so good news, very exciting news. The Association of Community College Trustees awarded a group, awarded our Board of Trustees a complimentary board training, one-day board training. And so it's pretty comprehensive. We have to come up with a mutually agreed-to date by June the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three, so we have some time. My recommendation is that we wait and do it in the spring, once we have the new board members and we can determine the topics that we want covered on that board training. But ACCT will come down and they will do the training for us free of charge. And so we're very excited about that. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Thirteen C, Title IX Report. Ms. Raquel Peña.
Hello, good evening. I'm a little bit under the weather. Board, President and Administration, Raquel Peña, Associated Genius Students, Title IX Coordinator for the record. In your packets, you will find the annual report from our president. And this is for the Title IX report from two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two academic year. Okay, so you will receive this report annually. And I don't know if you all have any questions?
No ma'am.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Peña. Next item is thirteen D, Enrollment Report. Dr. Fred Solis.
Madam President, I do have a short presentation to share with the board in terms of our fall enrollment numbers. We are about to be finalizing these numbers for this semester. And so for this particular fall semester, we were six point five six percent below the target. We were trying to match last year's numbers, but we didn't quite get there. The biggest change there was on our non-dual enrollment count, which was four hundred and thirty-four students short our target. Because of the enrollment target that fell short, then that also indicated that our semester credit hours fell short of the target of fifty-eight thousand, which was the number we had last fall semester. On our contact hours, because contact hours is affected by both dual and non-dual enrollment, overall, we were short five point six zero percent or five point six percent. For some reason or another, dual enrollment did not come through with some of their projections. There were two hundred and twenty-one students short, largely driven because not all the students were able to T S I test and be ready for starting of this fall semester. Because they did not take any of course exams, also they were short in preparing themselves for college. We are going to be including in the fall semester numbers, the quarter four continuing net numbers. In this case, although the total headcount was short, one hundred and sixty-seven students from last year, overall, the contact hours, which is rolled into the funding from the state, was a positive number. So we were up three point eight two percent on the contact hours for quarter four. Quarter four includes all of the continuing courses for June, July, and August. And so that period is already closed. Currently, we are opening quarter one, which is also part of the fall, the months of September, October, and November. Although we are, the numbers look very dire, we're halfway through that period at this time. But if you look at the number of contact hours, we're almost halfway there, even though we're halfway through the period. So we're pretty much moving along to reach the target of thirty-eight thousand contact hours. Upcoming is our fall second start semester. This will be, this is a short-term, eight-week term that begins on October the seventeenth and will end on December the sixteenth. Schedule consists of general academic courses mainly taught online. Currently, seven out of nineteen of those sections are already at maximum enrollment, meaning they're closed, which is about thirty-seven percent of those sections have closed already. Coming up soon, we are going to be opening our spring two thousand twenty-three registration and that will begin on November the fourteenth. Currently, the instructional units are working on finalizing the schedule and will make it available for students to view. And advising will continue on for the spring semester as well. And I do want to remind everybody that this Saturday, October the first, the free and financial aid application will open up. And so we will be hosting our pass of minutes here on campus where the federal financial aid application will be available. And so that will help get students process their financial aid in time for next year. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Ramírez.
I don't know if I missed it, but are we having a winter semester?
Yes, we will have a winter semester coming up as well. That schedule will be formulated as well as the spring semester.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Solis.
Thank you.
Next item is thirteen E, Gifts, Donations, Grants, an Endowment Report. Ms. Saad Applebaum.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ramírez and fellow administrators. Saad Ali Saappompa, Director of Donor Relations for the record. I come before you today to just give you an update on gifts, donations, endowments that have been received by the institution for, starting since January of two thousand twenty-two to date. And I believe that you all were provided with a copy of this recorded report. So for quarter one, we were at three hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-one. Quarter two, we came in at one hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred. Quarter three, we're at two hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and thirty with seventy for a total of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-one with seventy. Now, I do need to add that for quarter four, we do have some other monies that came in that are committed but have a transfer to the institution. They're currently with the L C Education Foundation. And if you allow me, I can just go ahead and give you a rundown of who these other grants organizations are. So first, we have Rio South Texas Education and Community Foundation Post-App, Michael Gonzalez. And if you allow me, I can just go ahead and give you a rundown of who these other grants organizations are. So first, we have Rio South Texas Education and Community Foundation Co-Step, Michael Gonzalez, who has been on that grant. The amount that was awarded is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, with a breakdown of a hundred and fifteen for a grant titled Get to the Finish Line, which is to support students that have fewer, that have fewer than four hours for them to graduate. Seven thousand dollars will go to EDC and three thousand of that amount will go to outreach and marketing. There will be a pending check presentation by Jim Warren, who is the president, the chairman of the Board of SED organization. Another endowment that was created, Dr. Ramirez was the lead on that, was the Raymond Martin Gutierrez and Melba P. Gutierrez Charitable Trust Endowment Fund. The amount that was secured there was fifty thousand dollars, and it was to support continuing education or workforce programming and/or student scholarship for students that would be enrolled in either of these two programs. During this week on Monday, we hold a check presentation here at the boardroom. Albert Lowry, who is the sole trustee of that particular foundation, was in attendance to present the check. And Minister Pita Sefella was joining us for that event as well. Another grant that came in through the South Texas Pathreach Foundation, presented or secured by your study, for forty thousand dollars. And the purpose of that grant is to support nursing and health sciences student scholarship to include tuition fees and or books. Also, through the Guadalupe and Nina Martinez Foundation, we secured a grant of the amount of forty thousand dollars. This one changed a little bit in focus because normally they would just fund nursing and health sciences, the two-year program. But last year, when I submitted the proposal, I took a chance and I asked if they would consider scholarships or BSN. Because up until that point, we didn't have any scholarships for BSN, nor did we have scholarships for Bayzork, which is our organizational leadership, faculty degree. And so they agreed. We secured forty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand five hundred for, twenty-five thousand five hundred for BSN, and twenty-two thousand five hundred for the Bayzork. And again, this is to support tuition fees and books for our students. So our total committed that will be transferring to the institution shortly is two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, for a year-to-date total of one million fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one with seventy cents.
Very good. Very, very good.
Thank you. Ms. Pampa, I know that Guadalupe and Nina Martinez are having a foundation meeting. Are we planning to attend?
They're having the actual meeting breach, which will be on October the eighth.
Yes.
And they have received the information to, to attend.
Okay.
Thank you.
At the [inaudible]. Yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is number fourteen. Next meeting date will be Thursday, November the third, six p.m. It's to be a regular Board of Trustees meeting. We will not have a meeting in October, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have a motion by Minister Ronkey. I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. A discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any apos? Motion carries? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Bye, dear. See you later.